...the job and was already doing the job. Number two, the 287G Task Force does not make our community safer. Instead, it leads to overpolicing of predominantly Hispanic neighborhoods and threatens to rip apart our community. This model turns our local police into an extension of ICE and has already created fear and overpolicing in the predominantly north side of Tyler. How many of you that Commissioner Drury called to come out to speak in favor of 287G live on the north side of Tyler? How many of you live in the predominantly Hispanic neighborhoods? I am guessing not many. However, I welcome you being here because if you are going to support something, the Bible says we should seek wisdom and we should seek understanding. Today, you get to hear directly from the members of the community that are directly affected by these policies, our Hispanic community. Last, in practice, 287G is rounding up immigrants that have no criminal history. In the past months since 287G Task Force came online, I can tell you 100% that it is not working as you're being told. Many people who have no criminal history are being detained. I've had to sit across the table from devastated families, U.S. citizen children left without mom or dad. I don't get the luxury of hardening my heart to their pain and their devastation. Please don't harden your hearts. I keep telling people that this will be the generation of U.S. citizen children that remember you took their parents away. Many of you will say that they deserve it, but I am glad that the Lord is not like us. He is merciful to forgive us of all our sins and to erase the debt that when we come before Him, He will only see the blood of the Lamb. Believe it or not, we too in the Hispanic and immigrant communities are Christians. So, we call on our brothers and sisters in Christ to join us in our suffering and remember that when one part of the body suffers, the whole body suffers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Royer.
My name is Sharon Guthrie. Do you want all my information or address and all that?
Did you fill out online?
Yes. No, I filled out this morning.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I am coming here as a citizen. Commissioner Drury did not call me. I did not get an email from her. And so, what I want to make clear is the role of government versus the role of people, basically Christians. And because we are called as Christians to love the downtrodden, to love the immigrant, to love those who are in need, period. But the role of government, and you can find these biblically in Deuteronomy, in Numbers, and in the Book of Romans, that the government is here to protect and defend our borders, protect its citizens, and not let our country be overrun by people who do not share our values and do not share our culture. And so, we just saw in New York where the New York foreigners overwhelmingly voted for a communist. That is not the American way. We are a republic and we intend to keep it. And so, I will just ask that you will consider the role of government versus the role of people. Because I love all people. I treat all people the same with kindness, and I believe that we all should. At the same time, if I get a ticket, it's because I've done something illegally, but I am a citizen, so I don't get deported. If you have come here illegally, there is a way to come and get your citizenship. And so, I just ask that you consider the role of government versus the role of people. It's basically Christians. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Now, Mr. Charles Wilson. And please do follow decorum. We don't have the outburst and things. Mr. Wilson's going to speak on item number four about Smith County Animal Control.
Yes, I'm Charles Wilson. I served 30 years in law enforcement with Smith County, 20 as elected constable where I started the animal control, and 10 as a sheriff deputy. And today, I'm here to ask the Commissioners' Court and thank county judge, all our Commissioners, Chad Hoag, who's our fire marshal overseeing animal control, and his helpers for all the work they've done to try to resolve this problem of stray dogs and so forth and so on. But I'd ask that I be put on a future agenda to discuss these three or four items in depth more to the Commissioners or one of their animal control meetings, and it'd really help out. But one of the items I'd like to put on there is talk about dealing with cats in this county. They're overwhelming, taking the county over. They're strays. A lot of them are catching rabies. We've got to do something with them. The second item is to maybe have our animal control department contact North Carolina and South Carolina, which was coming here and picking up stray dogs and adopting them out up there because you have to have a license to breed them. And also, Longview Animal Control has bought a van and they're hauling a lot of their stray animals up for adoption to other states. You could have Animal Control go ahead and check on these, but I'd like to be put on a future agenda for this because we're just overwhelmed. The Animal Control Department, Chad Hoag and his help, has really helped me out on stray animals, which I find a lot of people to adopt strays, we find, to help the county out. I would ask that y'all put me on one of your future agendas or one of your meetings to talk about this in depth. And the last of all, I've been on about 15 board of directors in the past, and I know how to raise money. And I've told our county judge and my county commissioner and several others that I'd like to take it on myself with help from the County Commissioners' Court, try to raise $15 million, which I raised money. I built fire departments here and started the ESD and a lot of other things, and I know how to raise it. And this money would help them out and maybe with their buildings and all for stray animals, which they can't house now because no room. So, I'd appreciate being notified of being put on one of the agendas or whatever to work and help everybody with this because they're definitely, it's sad. Thank you, Judge.
All right, thank you, Ms. Wilson. Appreciate that. Anybody else that needs to speak now? And speaking on Agenda Item 10, correct?
On 10, yes. So, Judges and Commissioners, thank you. Probably will not take my full three minutes. So, 20 years ago, when I was about to sit in the seat that Commissioner Moore now sits in, I was asked to raise my right hand and repeat the words that I do solemnly swear that I will faithfully execute the duties of the office at that time county commissioner and execute the duties of that office of the state of Texas and will, to the best of my ability, preserve, protect, and defend the Constitution and laws of the United States and of this state, so help me God. And that alone creates direction for us with which that we should take. I don't get to choose which of those laws I can look past. I don't choose which of those laws I choose to support. I support them all. There are many times in our community where these issues become politicized unnecessarily. The Constitution is not a political document. It is a life document that this country was founded on and continues to live by and which has made this the greatest place on earth to live in spite of our warts and all. But this is a program that you already have in place. If you look at the issue that we're discussing today, one constable is asking to participate. It's not a world changer. This is not turning Smith County upside down. This is someone saying that, "I want to participate in this program." And I'm sure he's going to get the proper training, and he's got the staff that can help handle this particular issue. Let me look on time. All right, good. But anyway, to me, this is a smaller issue. We see people amplify things, blow things out of proportion, and I think this is one of those areas. Look, we talk about women and children, and yes, I understand that is an issue, but if you look at the bookings in Smith County, there are some violent offenders who have broken laws, have multiple felonies, that are now off the streets, keeping our citizens and community safer. So, I'm speaking in favor of this, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Stein. All right, anyone else would like to speak now so they can go? Okay. If you'll come forward and state your name. And what Agenda item you would like to speak on.
I'll be speaking on Agenda Item Number 10. My name is Carolyn Davis. I am a citizen of this county, Smith County. I live in Tyler, Texas. I'm a retired teacher. I want to say good morning to the judge as well as to the other members of the court. The United States is a country that is a predominantly Christian nation. I know, you know that. Yet ICE, the Immigration and Customs Enforcement Agency, is an arm of the federal government agency that has currently been dispatched by this administration to wreak havoc in the name of fighting crime in our major cities and to supposedly detain illegal immigrants. This court, with a unanimous vote on November the 4th and prior, decided to partner with and further support ICE to the extent of allowing the federal government to reimburse the sheriff's office for any costs incurred while carrying out their ICE duties. Today, we find ourselves here again, most of us standing before the court in opposition to 287G Task Force Chapel Hill Precinct 4. We speak, you listen, and then you vote, of course. If you vote unanimously as before, or if the majority of you vote in favor of the 287G Task Force in Chapel Hill, just know, in reality, your vote is not serving to make this county safer. Your vote serves to divide, to separate, to create fear, to pit law enforcement against hardworking people in this county, to separate families, to separate children from their mothers and fathers. I wasn't here to hear how you started the court this morning. Normally, you start with a prayer. Often, you pray in the name of Jesus. Well, Jesus, time and time again, showed compassion for the people. Why not end with an act of compassion with a no vote? Vote against 287G for Constable Precinct 4. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Let's do, please hold down the applause. Thank you. All right, anybody else want to speak now? Okay, come forward. And state your name and what the Agenda item you're going to speak on.
My name is Spencer Gillum. Agenda Item 10. I will be brief, extremely brief, and I want to thank the Commissioners for this opportunity to speak this morning concerning, which I'm in favor of, the 289G program, Precinct 4, Chapel Hill, which authorizes a county judge to sign the necessary documentation in order to assist in the public safety of our entire area. This allows the local precinct four constable's office to work in tandem with Immigration and Customs Enforcement and upholds the rule of law from 1996, the illegal immigration reform and immigrant responsibility, those are key words, Enforcement and Responsibility Act. As of June of this year, over 737 nation, I guess, local administrations and 40 states are involved in this. I'm not against becoming a lawful citizen. The key is lawful. We need consistency across the county, state, nation, and just across our whole United States. There are set guidelines to do this. There are multiple foreign and domestic actors out there that are using both sides as pawns. I'm going to name a couple, and I'll close briefly. One, these are protesting, they're foreign actors, and they're protesting major violent activities going on. Not that it's going on here, but we need to watch out for it. One is a Party for Socialism and Liberation, the PSL, based out of China. Neville Ray Singham is that. They're funding a lot of this violence going on. Open Society Foundation, George Soros, multiple. He's funding a lot of this violence going on, not the peaceful, but the violent. We need to look out for that. These are actors that are dividing our nation. Consistency with our rule of law unifies. It must not be about us and them, the citizens. It must be about we, the people, lawfully. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gillum. Another?
Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. Thank you for allowing me to speak today here. My name is Raquel, and I'm a U.S. citizen born and raised here in Tyler, Texas. This is my home. I am the daughter of immigrants who came here seeking a better future. I am the first in my family to graduate from high school and also later on Tyler Junior College. I am a mother of four children, ages 16, 11, 6, and 3. I am here today because I care deeply about their future and well-being for our community. I am speaking today as someone who has seen, sorry, the impact that immigration enforcement policies can have on families, including my own. Last week, my 11-year-old son told me he worries every day because of our skin color, our hair, our accents. As you can tell, I have baby one, and I am very proud of one. He told me some of his friends' parents have been taken away. He fears something similar could happen to all of us, Spanish people. My children carry an envelope with copies of their birth certificates because they are afraid of being mistakenly wrong for someone they are not. For a child to feel that level of fear is heartbreaking, especially during a time when families should feel safe and protected. In our community, families regardless of immigration status are afraid to call for help or report problems. This creates fear, stress, and confusion in everyday life. These are real spirit experiences that affect daily living, school attendances, mental health, and economic stability. A lot of children are not going to school because of this. When families experience a separation or uncertainty, the financial and emotional consequences are significant not only for all of us individually, but for the whole community as we speak, whites, blacks, Hispanics, Latinos, Mexicans, all of us. I speak not only as a mother, but also as someone who works and pays taxes and contributes for this country and cares about everyone who lives here. From what I see, it's fear and uncertainty do not strengthen communities at all whatsoever. They make people withdraw, stay silent, and are avoiding to seeking for help that affects public safety, trust, community, and stability. Four topics that are very important for Smith County and all of us. I ask that we consider the human impact these policies have on our children, families, workers, business, and off the sense of safety that every resident deserves. We all want the same things, don't we? We want peace. We want stability. And at the opportunity to raise our families without fear and stress, I am asking you to follow those footsteps just as Houston, Texas did and other countries. Please retract and avoid 287G and other programs from Smith County. After all, we don't deserve to have this in here. Thank you for listening to my experiences and your concern and your time.
Thank you.
And God bless you.
Thank you. Can you repeat your name again? I just need to make sure.
Raquel Abellar, daughter of immigrants and also a granddaughter of immigrants. And I was born and raised here in Tyler, Texas. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, who is? Okay, come forward, please. State your name. And the Agenda item you're speaking on.
Thank you. Can you hear me? Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to speak in the beginning because I don't know how much longer he's going to last. But my name is Sarah Field, citizen journalist and precinct chair in Precinct 230 in White House. And I also want to speak as a mother. We are gambling with the lives of our children, including this child, who is actually named after Lake and Riley. I support authorizing the Precinct 4 Constable's Office to partner with ICE through the 287G program, and I support empowering local deputies to enforce federal immigration law. You want to talk about devastated families. There are mothers who will never again hear their daughters laugh because a repeated felon, someone who should have been deported years ago, was allowed to stay and prey on our communities. Teenage boys have been killed by drunk drivers with multiple deportations on their record, men who were released back onto our streets instead of being sent home. Texas is the only state that systematically tracks crimes by immigration status. Over the past five years, 2021 through 2025, undocumented immigrants were charged with approximately 590 homicides and convicted in roughly 410 cases. This equates to about 80 to 120 homicide convictions per year committed by illegal immigrants in Texas. These 410 to 590 deaths represent American citizens and legal residents killed in preventable crimes, often by DUI fatalities, gang violence, or domestic murders. Approximately 1,000 undocumented immigrants have been arrested in Texas over the past five years on child sex trafficking crimes or related minor victim charges. It is preventable. I understand the argument that not all of them are violent. I do. But how will you know? You cannot answer that question. How will you know if they are not here legally and you do not know who they are? These are not just statistics. These are our babies, our families, our future. ICE is not a faceless agency. ICE is the thin blue line that stands between our innocent American children and a violent criminal who has no right to be here if they are here illegally. When we demonize ICE, we are telling every cartel smuggler, every child trafficker, every gang member who has been ordered deported 10 times over to come in. The doors open. Our families are defenseless. That is not compassion. That is betrayal of the American people. Compassion begins at home with the single mom in Ohio who just lost her son to fentanyl that was brought across the unguarded border, with the widow in Georgia whose husband was murdered by an illegal immigrant with a rap sheet longer than my arm, with every American family that just wants to live in peace. We can have a heart and still have a border. We can welcome legal immigrants with open arms, and I do, and still say enough is enough to those who sneak in and hurt our people. ICE is not the enemy of legal immigrants. ICE is the shield of American families, and if we don't protect our families first, we won't have a country left to protect. So, I say God bless our law enforcement, God bless ICE, and God bless the American family. Thank you. Whoops, sorry.
Thank you, Ms. Field. All right, next up, needs to leave, Mr. LaCarty. I guess so. Come forward. State your name and the Agenda item you're speaking on.
Craig LaCarty, Agenda Item Number 10, speaking forward. Good morning, Judge and Commissioners. I appreciate the opportunity to speak, and I'm here to ask for your continued support for 287G, just like you did very recently with the unanimous vote. This program strengthens public safety, and it protects law-abiding residents and equips our law enforcement with the tools they need to do their jobs effectively. Let's be real, our county faces a lot of situations where criminal activity intersects with unauthorized immigration. It happens in our county. It happens across the state. It happens across the country. Repeat offenders, human trafficking, drug trade, child trafficking. Serious criminals are able to evade local law enforcement because of legal limitations, and so, participation with 287G allows trained officers, trained law enforcement, to identify and coordinate with the federal authorities regarding individuals who pose a threat to our families, a threat to the safety of folks, a threat to our children, without targeting innocent families, without targeting children or law-abiding residents. Now, there are many voices that exaggerate or mischaracterize 287G. So, let's be clear, this isn't like some kind of a Gestapo thing. It operates under strict federal oversight. There's documented procedures that prevent the abuse of authority, and it doesn't encourage racial profiling. That's an undercurrent that we've heard. And Lady Liberty has a blindfold for a reason because when crimes are committed, the crime is the issue that law enforcement deals with. It's not about how much melanin's in the skin. It's not about white, black, brown, green, purple, whatever color. Lady Liberty is blind, and so, when crimes happen, law enforcement is tasked with dealing with those crimes. It is not a political or a punitive thing. 287G, participation with it is about protecting our communities, plain and simple. When someone commits these horrific crimes, as the previous speaker indicated with several examples, and we could name a number, we could name tons more, protecting our families and protecting our communities from these repeat offenders, from these violent criminals, is paramount. And so, it's incumbent upon us to support and defend our Constitution and our laws, and this is another tool that we have to accomplish that. Approving participation by the Constable four office will enhance public safety by lawfully detaining individuals who have repeatedly broken the law, and it'll build community confidence when they see that it's being used appropriately. I'm just, oh, I'm already done. Okay. I encourage you to support and vote for Agenda Item 10.
All right, thank you, Mr. LaCarty. We have another? All right, come forward and state your name and the Agenda item. Thank you.
My name's Mark Bartlett, and I'm here to speak about Number 10. You took the oath for this office of Commissioner to uphold the U.S. Constitution. So, a no vote on 287G would be breaking your oath to this office and to the Constitution of the United States under the Supremacy Act. Let the law be your guide. Thank you.
My name is Thomas Matronowski, and I filled out the form online. I am the grandson of an immigrant. In 1906, my grandfather legally came into the United States of America through Ellis Island from Poland. He filled out all the forms, secured the proper sponsorships, and legally came into the United States. Some 20 years later, he became an American citizen. I have no issue with legal immigration. The laws on the books regarding immigration are quite clear. If an immigrant follows the existing laws regarding coming to the U.S., the individual will have no issues with law enforcement. They are free to live their dream in the comfort and safety that comes from those who obey the law. When an immigrant enters this country illegally, they are not citizens. They are not afforded the same rights and privileges as a citizen or as a legal immigrant, nor should those rights and privileges be afforded to them. For their own well-being and for the sake of domestic tranquility within the borders of the United States, those immigrants that enter the U.S. illegally should be returned to their country of origin as soon as possible. Any help that local government can afford should be made available to the federal authorities so that the law may be enforced. Living in the shadows is not living. The statistics on illegal drugs coming into this country, on human trafficking of women and children, on rape, murder, theft, squatters and homelessness, underpaying jobs, the financial, physical, and psychological burden to our institutions of schools, unions, healthcare, and the government and... and the government and non-government benevolence are well documented. Using immigrants as political pawns for the sake of winning enough votes offends me. It's time for government to right the wrongs of past administrations' executive branch. Let every soul be subject to the governing authorities, for there is no authority except from God. And the authorities that exist are appointed by God, and that includes this entity. Therefore, whoever resists the authority resists the ordinance of God, and those who resist will bring judgment on themselves. For rulers are not a terror to the good works, but for evil. Do you want to be unafraid of the authority? Do what is good, and you will have praise for the same. For he is God's minister to you for good. But if you do evil, be afraid, for he does not bear the sword in vain. For he is God's minister and avenger to execute wrath on him who practices evil. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bartlett. All right, does everybody? Oh, we have another.
Thank you. My name is Julian Martinez. I filled out both an online application and the in-person one. I'm gonna be speaking on agenda item number 10. Members of the Commissioner's Court, fellow Texans and neighbors, thank you for allowing me to speak today. I stand before you with one clear request, that this court reject the constable's office proposal to enter to Task Force Model 287G agreement with ICE. My concerns are not abstract, and they are rooted in documented evidence from communities across the country and here at home. When local law enforcement becomes entangled with federal immigration enforcement, the results are not simply more arrests. The results are children kept out of school, families living in fear, and communities that become inherently less safe. Various studies, including those from the Stanford Institute for Economic Policy Research, show that activation of 287G agreement programs and related immigration enforcement actions caused significant declines in school attendance among Hispanic children, especially in districts with growing immigrant populations. Since Smith County expanded immigration enforcement reimbursements through its sheriff's office, we too have seen rising absences among Hispanic students here. These numbers represent more than data points. They represent children falling behind academically, losing routine and peer support, and carrying fear-based trauma that are gonna last them a lifetime. We must also acknowledge another reality. 287G programs have repeatedly been linked to racial profiling and civil rights abuses. Independent reviews, including those by the ACLU and the Department of Homeland Security's Office of Inspector General, show that a large portion of detention to under 287G stem from minor trafficking infractions and not serious crimes. These same reports highlight chronic problems. There's insufficient oversight, inconsistent training, and a lack of safeguards against discriminatory policing. When parents, including U.S. citizens and lawful residents, begin to fear that a broken taillight or routine interaction with an officer could lead to immigration detention, they stop reporting crimes, stop cooperating with law enforcement, and many stop sending their children to school. This makes every neighborhood less safe. In Smith County, the Hispanic student population continues to grow. That demographic reality demands policies that strengthen trust between immigrant families and law enforcement, not policies that erode it. Based on the patterns seen nationwide, the likely effects of entering into a new 287G agreement would be lower student engagement, worse educational outcomes, and households living in fear. Those outcomes do not serve public safety, prosperity, or the future of our county. In short, if our goal is to promote safety, protect children, and uphold the civil rights of every resident, then the evidence suggests that the county should deny the constable office's involvement with the new 287G program. Instead, we should choose policies that keep kids in school, promote cooperation with law enforcement, and strengthen the trust that healthy communities depend on. And I would like to go into scripture if that is okay. We are well aware of the law and the governing law of the U.S. that says illegal immigrants should be deported back. However, if you look in scripture, specifically Luke, chapter 6, verse 6, "On another Sabbath, he went into the synagogue and was teaching, and a man was there whose right hand was shriveled." "The Pharisees and the teachers of the law were looking for a reason to accuse Jesus, so they watched him closely to see if he would heal on the Sabbath. But Jesus knew what they were thinking and said to the man with the shriveled hand, 'Get up and stand in front of everyone,' so he got up and stood there. Then Jesus said to them, 'I ask you, which is lawful on the Sabbath? To do good or to do evil? To save life or to destroy it?' He looked around at all of them and said to the man, 'Stretch out your hand.' He did so, and the man's hand was completely restored. But the Pharisees and the teachers of the law were furious and began to discuss one another what they might do to Jesus.'" This shows us that God's law of compassion and love trumps anything that any man law, any governing body could make. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Hi. Elizabeth A. Gentry is my official legal name, and I did sign on an online form. I'm speaking on item number 10. You know me as Izzy Gentry. I'm a certified crisis manager. First, I want to thank the Commissioners for your time and attentiveness you've given to such a difficult and important subject. I appreciate the way that you've approached this issue with care and intentionality. Today, I want to make a fair and truthful statement regarding Constable Joplin. If you live, work, or have children in precinct four, you know firsthand that he consistently shows up to protect and support our families. He serves children of every nationality and our community of diverse backgrounds with commitment and integrity. I don't believe any one person can speak for an entire nationality, gender, or generation. So today, I'm simply speaking as an American, one who believes in safety, accountability, and the responsibility we all share to protect our communities. The proposed 287G task force model isn't about targeting individuals. It's about equipping our local officers to respond to real-world crises with clarity and confidence. It's not the mission of law enforcement to seek out illegal immigrants. It's their duty to respond when criminal activity, trafficking, and fentanyl threaten our children right here in Smith County. These aren't hypotheticals. These are realities we face every day. I left Santa Ana, California more than 13 years ago because of failed immigration policies that overwhelmed our local jails, hospitals, and neighborhoods. And if you want data, you can look at the data of Santa Ana between the years of 2000 to today and see what it actually does to safety. So today, I stand in support of precinct four and their request for the 287G model, not out of fear or politics, but out of a deep desire to see our county equipped, informed, and ready to protect the people we all serve. Thank you for your leadership and for continuing to stand for Smith County families.
Thank you, Ms. Gentry. Does everyone else wanna just wait then until the agenda item comes up? All right, very good. All right, that takes us to item number one. Considering, take necessary action to ratify a resolution proclaiming November 11, 2025 as Veterans Appreciation Day in Smith County. And I know we have Ms. Jackie Clay Robertson here. If you would like to come forward and say a few words. She is the co-chair for the Veterans Committee for the Chamber of Commerce here in Tyler.
Thank you. Good morning, Judge Franklin, Commissioners, staff. I have the honor of serving as the co-chair of the Veterans Committee for the Tyler Area Chamber of Commerce. And on behalf of our entire committee, I want to say thank you. Thank you for presenting this resolution recognizing November 11, 2025 as Veterans Appreciation Day in Smith County. This acknowledgement really means a great deal to the veterans that we serve, to their families, and to those of us who work every day to make sure they feel seen, supported, and valued. I also want to extend our appreciation for the county's partnership on the Veterans Day Celebration at the Boulders at Lake Tyler. Your cosponsorship helped make that event meaningful, beautiful, and accessible to veterans in Smith County. We could not have done it without your support. And I want to take this opportunity to also thank you for your sponsorship of the signs for the Veterans Memorial Highway and for all the work that you do to uplift veterans and honor those who have served. These have a tremendous impact on the spirit and the dignity of all the men and women who have sacrificed so much on our behalf. As a committee, we recognize that none of this happens without collaboration. So we appreciate your willingness to partner with us. We appreciate your leadership and the way you consistently prioritize veterans in Smith County. We are grateful for your support and for continuing to stand with us as we work to honor those that have given so much for our freedom. Thank you.
And while you were speaking, you had a big team join you, and we appreciate them. And I just want to point out that the ceremony out at the Boulders this year was amazing. That was the first of many, we think. What a beautiful location, all the flags out by the lakeside. It was really, really nice. So thank you for allowing me to be there. So I'm gonna read this. If y'all will stay put, I'm gonna read this, and then we'll get a photo with the court. "Whereas, the citizens of Smith County, Texas, recognize and honor the courage, sacrifice, and service of the men and women of the United States Armed Forces who have defended our freedom and protected our nation throughout history. And whereas Veterans Day provides a meaningful opportunity for our community to express gratitude to those who have served in the Army, Navy, Air Force, Marine Corps, Coast Guard, National Guard, and Reserves, both in times of war and in peace. And whereas, Smith County is home to thousands of veterans whose leadership, strength, and character continue to enrich our community through service, mentorship, civic engagement. And whereas, the Tyler Area Chamber of Commerce Veterans Committee, in partnership with Smith County, the Boulders at Lake Tyler, Go Bus Transit, and numerous organizations, hosted the 2025 Veterans Day Celebration on November 11, 2025 at the Boulders at Lake Tyler. And whereas, this event did feature a public ceremony, musical tributes, a reception and luncheon, and opportunities for fellowship and reflection, affirming the deep respect our county holds for those who have worn the uniform of our nation. And whereas, the Smith County Commissioners Court wishes to reaffirm its ongoing commitment to support veterans and their families, promote awareness of their contributions, and encourage citizens to participate in community efforts that honor their service. Now therefore, be it resolved that Commissioners Court of the County of Smith, through ratification of this resolution, does hereby proclaim November 11, 2025 as Veterans Appreciation Day in Smith County, and encourages all citizens to join in activities and events that recognize and celebrate extraordinary service of our veterans. And it's signed by me, the judge, and all the Commissioners. So if y'all, oh, I need to vote. Do we have a motion? So move. We have a motion to, excuse me, to ratify that resolution proclaiming November 11, 2025 as Veterans Appreciation Day in Smith County. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right, let's get that photo. All right, that brings us to agenda item number two. Considering, take necessary action to approve a resolution proclaiming November 19, 2025 as Cotton Belt Museum Day in Smith County. And I believe we have Keith Black here. If you would come forward and say a few words. And others.
Judge and Honorable Commissioners Court, my name is Keith Black. I'm the director of the Cotton Belt Museum located here in Tyler, Texas, at 210 East Oakwood Street. We're an all-volunteer team. We have today with me Tim Nortier and Mike Tanner, who is a retired Union Pacific engineer on staff. We'd like to invite the public as we're open Thursday through Saturday, 10 to 4:00. We're also available for school tours by appointment.
All right, I'm gonna turn it over to Commissioner Moore, and he's gonna read the resolution.
Thank you, Judge, and thank you all for being here and doing what you do. At a regular meeting of the Smith County Commissioners Court held at the Smith County Courthouse Annex in Tyler, Texas, at which a quorum was present, the following resolution was adopted. Whereas, in 1902, construction began on the Cotton Belt Depot, and on June 2, 1905, the depot opened to the public and continued service until the last passenger train departed on April 22, 1956. And whereas, in 1988, the Southern Pacific Railroad deeded the depot to the city of Tyler. In 2003, the city restored the depot to its original beauty. And whereas, today, the depot is home to the Cotton Belt Depot Museum, located in the old baggage section on the east end of the building. It is staffed by volunteers from the Cotton Belt Rail Historical Society, the Tyler TAP Chapter. And whereas, included in the museum is the vast Bragg collection of Lionel O. Gage electric trains that the late Clyde Bragg accumulated over a 26-year period. He donated his collection of about 200 locomotives and more than 1,600 rail cars, as well as a vast collection of houses, vehicles, airports, and bridges. The Tyler TAP Chapter maintains the collection and display in conjunction with the museum. And whereas, the museum has welcomed visitors from all 50 states, the District of Columbia, and more than 30 foreign countries. More than 250 visitors come to the depot each month, and tours are conducted daily. The Tyler TAP Chapter is committed to educate, preserve, and restore the railroad heritage. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Commissioners Court of the County of Smith, Texas, through adoption of this resolution, does hereby proclaim November 19, 2025 as Cotton Belt Depot Museum Day. That is in Smith County, and it encourages all citizens to visit this wonderful museum to learn about our railroad heritage. And it is signed by the judge and all four Commissioners.
All right, I would entertain a motion to approve that resolution proclaiming November 19, 2025 as Cotton Belt Museum Day in Smith County. So move. That's motion by Commissioner Moore.
Second.
Second by Mr. Harrod. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. If you guys will come forward, we'd love to get a picture.
Thank you, Judge and Honorable Court.
Yeah, we shall. One more.
All right, next up is agenda item three. Considering, take necessary action to approve a resolution proclaiming November 2025 as Prematurity Awareness Month in Smith County. And before I turn it over, Commissioner Drury, I'm gonna announce who we have here. I'm not sure which one of you is coming up, but whoever's gonna speak will be fine. Stormy Toler, co-chair Healthy Me, Healthy Babies Coalition. Takora Smith, a member of Healthy Me, Healthy Babies Coalition. George Roberts, our CEO for the Northeast Texas Public Health District. And then Carol Henson, Coalition Member. Tiffany Murray, Coalition Member. Arnetta Garner, Coalition Member. And Dusty Gonzalez, Interim Director of Net Health, Public Health Preparedness. All right, who's coming up? Y'all come forward.
All right, good morning, Judge. Good morning, Commissioners. My name is Takora Smith. I serve as the Director for the Women, Infants, and Children Program at the Northeast Texas Public Health District. And I am here representing the Healthy Me, Healthy Babies Coalition. A little bit about our coalition. We have been in place for 10 years. We have 45 to 50 members that meet monthly at the Genicove on the third Monday of every month from noon to 1:00. We are navigators, community health workers, nutritionists, dieticians, social workers. We have physicians and nurse practitioners that come- We have physicians and nurse practitioners that come every month to figure out ways and strategies to lower the maternal morbidity rates and our infant mortality rates. Prematurity is the number-one challenge for our infants, and it does lead to death each year. Here in our county, one out of 10 babies are born premature. We have 15 million on an annual basis in Texas that are born premature. Also, we work with DSAHS and programs like Nurse Family Partnership that are home visiting, Healthy Start that helps us with transportation and utility assistance, Dream, it's a high-risk care coordination program that actually links families to resources. We actually work with child development programs because babies that are born premature have developmental delays, and it also causes some health issues. So today, we ask that you support us in this week with Prematurity Awareness Week. So if you could wear purple for our premies, and if we could partner, because we're looking at some strategies, like a hypertension program where we educate your different precincts and the families. Our goal is, Smith County, when our families come here, that this is a safe space to raise their children. And so our goal is to make sure our moms and our fathers have access to insurance, that they have transportation. They also have a safe space to live, so we work with housing. But also making sure that things that we think about that we take for granted, like soap and diapers and toilet paper. So we host hygiene closets every month. It is the fourth Wednesday of every month, and so we have about 110, 115 families that come to our hygiene closet. But we also educate them on things like measles, or anything that's out in our county that they need to know about, we educate them. So we ask for this partnership, that you come, visit our meeting, so you hear the strategies, and we work together for your different precincts to make sure the families in those communities know that they have support in our community. We work alongside March of Dimes, Zeta Phi Beta, and so many other programs, that we're leading the charge in making sure our moms and babies. We have a peer dad that assists our fathers and mentor our fathers. So thank you for today for recognizing Prematurity Awareness Day on November 17 and the week of Prematurity Week.
All right, thank you, Ms. Smith. So when are we supposed to wear purple? All week?
I need you to wear all week. Wear purple, everyone has, even if it's just cutting purple lights, go buy them, you know, and shine them on your doorsteps, or a tie, a shirt, a ribbon. But let our families know we support them here in Smith County.
Well, thank you, you did a great job explaining what you're doing. Did anyone else want to speak? George, did you have any words? Okay, she did a great, she did a great job. All right, I'm going to turn it over to Commissioner Drury.
First, I want to thank you for the incredible impact that you're making on our community and raising awareness to this issue, and thank you for all that you do. At a regular meeting of the Smith County Commissioners Court held at the Smith County Courthouse Annex, Tyler, Texas, at which a quorum was present, the following resolution was ratified. Whereas, the March of Dimes staff works closely with community partners, such as the Northeast Texas Public Health District Department and others, to promote awareness of the seriousness of premature birth associated with our communities and the families we serve. And whereas, Prematurity Awareness Month, Premies for Change Week, and World Prematurity Day are recognized to help every baby have a happy and healthy first birthday by connecting community members to preconception, pregnancy, and postpartum support resources, so every baby has a fighting chance. And whereas, the Healthy Me, Healthy Babies Coalition includes a collective of organizations and individuals from diverse backgrounds working together to help every baby have a happy and healthy first birthday. And whereas, Smith County shows its commitment to the Healthy Me, Healthy Babies Coalition by encouraging residents to wear purple and raise awareness about the high prevalence of preterm birth. Now therefore, be it resolved, that the Commissioners Court of the County of Smith, through ratification of this resolution, does hereby proclaim November 2025 as Prematurity Awareness Month in Smith County, and encourages everyone to pledge their support to help fight against premature birth. Witness our hands this day, the 18th day of November, and it's signed by the judge and commissioners.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Yep, and I would now entertain a motion to approve that resolution proclaiming November 2025 as Prematurity Awareness Month in Smith County.
So moved.
That's a motion by Commissioner Drury.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Harret. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Y'all come forward for a pick. All right, that brings us to Item Number Four, considering to take necessary action to engage Fitzpatrick Architects in a professional services agreement for a feasibility study regarding the Smith County Animal Shelter utilizing American Rescue Plan Act funds, that's ARPA, and authorized County Judge sign all related documentation. We do have Daniel Romo here, he's here in case we have questions. This is our fee proposal, with the understanding that Smith County would like to have a feasibility study conducted on possible addition of a dog park, a green space, with shade structure and lighting to the existing site. This would require selective demolition of the existing building and tying to existing utilities for any drainage issues. Along with that, investigate the existing facility for possible upgrades to help alleviate some exhaust and drainage issues on the interior of the facility. And so to accomplish that task, they are proposing the following steps. Number one, engineers review the site improvements, utilities, drainage, fire access, current mechanical and plumbing in the shelter, and recommend improvements. Code research for compliance with local and state codes. Investigation of mechanical, electrical, and plumbing system within the existing building. Site survey needed for full topo with utilities easements and right-of-ways. Feasibility of adding new outdoor dog park with shade and public interface with associated site improvements. And six, feasibility of plumbing and drainage issues within the building. And the total with all the engineering, architectural services are not to exceed $49,000. And again, that's with ARPA funding dedicated to that. Any comments or questions?
I have a question for Ms. Smith. Can you refresh me on how much money was set aside in the ARPA funding for the animal control changes?
I'm sorry, I don't have that figure with me, but I can get it for you.
Okay. And this is not to exceed?
Forty-nine thousand. Correct.
Ms. Latch, on the Grant Works, was Grant Works contacted about the change that Smith County would be making towards where this money is going? The ARPA funds that were previously submitted?
We have been in contact with Grant Works, yes ma'am.
Okay, well, no one followed up with me on an email to show that Grant Works had approved that this was legal to change this.
Oh, I didn't see that email, I'm sorry. I don't.
I didn't know, is that required?
We did an order back, I believe in July.
Yeah.
The order amended our current funding for ARPA to include the animal shelter, and that was included, and Grant Works was consulted on that order, in that amendment.
Okay, well, thanks for that clarification, I just didn't get that yesterday.
Okay. All right, any other questions? All right, then I would entertain a motion to engage Fitzpatrick Architects in a professional services agreement for a feasibility study regarding the Smith County Animal Shelter utilizing ARPA funds and authorized County Judge sign all related documentation.
Motion made.
That's a motion by Commissioner Moore.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Caraway. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. Item Number Five, considering to take necessary action to approve a parking space lease agreement between Smith County and Tyler Hotel Partners pursuant to Texas Local Government Code 615.003B and authorized County Judge to sign all related documentation. And we do have Valencia representatives here for any questions we may have, but I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Wilson first.
Yes, Judge and Commissioners, this is for a lease for the parking structure, specifically 100 spaces on the fifth floor of our parking garage, for the Valencia Group and Tyler Hotel Partners to utilize for their patrons, staff, and other visitors to use, either through valet parking or through their own resources to park there if needed. So you should have a copy of the lease that was provided, the proposed lease that was provided to you, I believe, based on a previous order that the Commissioners Court issued back in 2023, setting a space rate for the space. The spaces that we set to lease, those spaces in the parking garage, if we were to have a lease in place, was $50 per space. And so that's the recommended amount that we would use for this specific lease. And that is a part of our bond structure, the way we structured our bond, as you recall, it is required, because we are using a parking garage, there is some revenue generated, that revenue can be used to basically put back into the interest and sinking fund, and to be used for paying off that debt. And so if you decide to approve 100 spaces, that would be a $5,000 a month payment for the spaces.
And this, we're talking about the top floor of the parking facility.
Yes.
The Smith County Parking Facility. I think there's 100 or 101, I'm not exactly sure on that.
It's almost the entire top floor of the parking garage.
Any comments or questions on that lease agreement from the court? All right, so we would, we would need to, there are, we did adjust, we made some changes within the term.
Yes.
And do you have that lease right in front of you?
Pull it up real quick.
I want to make sure everybody knows what that term is.
So the term of the lease would be, it was requested, it would begin on December 15, 2025, is the commencement date. They would not be paying until such time as they utilize the spaces. So I know there's going to be some construction going on, and it's going to take a little bit of time to begin, for the Valencia and Tyler Hotel Partners to begin constructing, or to begin utilizing those spaces. But it would be a five-year term, so from 2025 to 2030, with eight options to renew at individual five-year terms. We do have provisions to ensure that we do not bind successive courts, and we're discussing with the Valencia Group and Tyler Hotel Partners right now with some of the language on that specific issue, so.
So at this point, we would be approving what we have in there right now. I guess we need to get Valencia up here, our representative, if one would come forward, please.
So in the meantime, we would still have complete access to the 100 parking spots. This component of it beginning in December allows them to continue to move forward on their project.
Yes.
And satisfying that they will.
Satisfying some of their financing requirements, and I believe the Tyler Hotel Partners representative can speak to that.
Yeah, and I'm sorry for not, tell me your name again.
My name's David Miller.
Okay.
I'm the Vice President of Tyler Hotel Partners G.P. LLC, which is the general partner of Tyler Hotel Partners LP.
All right, thank you, Mr. Miller. Now, I guess we can, if you had a question, Commissioner, if you wanted to address him.
I think it's addressed, but.
Okay.
Any commentary you have, Mr. Miller?
Other than, just want to express our complete enthusiasm about this project, bringing a 144-room, full-service, upper upscale hotel to downtown Tyler, Texas. This parking agreement allows us to proceed forward with that project, and it's a requirement of our lender, and our lender on this particular project would be Frost Bank. Thank you.
And they, so right now, and I'm not sure if you can, if you can help me on this, but right now, what we had discussed and what we were sending back and forth, email version, is that latest one, the only change was the 50 per car.
$50 per car, and the term of the lease to include a five-year term. So beginning, the initial term would be December 15, 2025, and it would end December 15, 2030, with eight options for renewal, so eight successive options of five-year terms.
So I think if you guys are in agreement with that, then we can move forward with a vote, correct?
Yes.
Yes, sir, we're in agreement with that.
Okay.
And there is some other language that we're going to work with Tyler Hotel Partners on, that regarding the potential for terminating the lease, it's just, it's some, either party being able to terminate the lease within the timeframe of the term that we have, so.
Okay, so does that scare you with that, or do y'all need to?
Well, we need to work through that language still. We do need some kind of provisions in there that allow us, that provide some certainty as to having these parking spaces.
And we can do that, there's no, there should be no issues with that. We had an initial, either party had an initial right to terminate with 30-day notice.
Okay.
We can extend those out, and there should be no issue with that at this point, moving forward, so.
Okay.
We can discuss what specific language they would require.
So we can go ahead and approve it today with that language to be possibly adjusted?
Yes, yes.
Does it come back after that, once it's adjusted?
It does not need to, but if you would like for it to, we certainly can.
Well, I think we should be approving these leases when they're in their final state, not approving and then amending.
Well, I know they, and that's what I was, that's the reason I was asking the questions. And so at that point, I know you guys need, you guys need it quickly, correct?
Yes, sir. With some luck, we're closing before Thanksgiving.
Okay.
Well, is the without clause is the issue on 30 days? Would you be open to 60 days' notice?
So what we need, not only for our patrons, but also for our lender and our investors, is some certainty that there's place to park cars for our patrons and our employees. And without that certainty, it's hard to, well, it's impossible to get a lender to loan money on this. Furthermore, it's also difficult, if not impossible, to get equity investors to invest in this project. So no, 60 days would not, would not work. We need something that's got a pretty long tail in front of it.
Well, all of us are going to be on the court at least through '26, right? So what would, what would prevent us from doing something through the middle of '26?
Nothing?
I mean, obviously, the longer the better, but if we can, well, the middle of '26 is six months, you know, we really need about, at least, because what happens is if this lease gets terminated, we have to go find other parking somewhere.
Right.
And there are some other options, they're not nearly as desirable for our patrons and for our employees, but we have to go secure those parking spaces in other locations. And so we would ask that there's really, first off, our initial ask was that was not terminable during any of the requested terms. I don't know if that works for Smith County or not.
Well, we can't bind future. Well, we can't bind future courts.
Yeah.
Because under the law, future people on this court can change it. So the only thing that we could do is, is tell you what we could commit to while we're all still sitting here, which for all of us is through twenty-six.
So if we could put a, a, a kind of termination period of not less than one year, I think that would work well for us. I don't know if that works for the court.
I think when this was presented, we had multiple other options other than the parking garage that we could offer as an alternative. So if we did terminate and you got ninety days or a hundred and twenty days' notice, you had those alternative parking lots that they could shift to temporarily while they found another place.
Of course.
There's, there's other parking available, but I don't see any reason to terminate this. I, I don't know that that's a huge risk.
Yeah, I wouldn't see it as really as a risk at all at this point, but I know we have to get the language in there, so.
And this is without cause that we're speaking now?
Yes, this would be termination without cause.
With cause, if, if your employees, if, if the behavior of the patrons and if things are going on.
Correct.
Certainly warrant understanding, that's entirely different point. But the without cause portion, with a hundred and eighty days?
What does the lender say?
Well, the lender, we'd like it to be five years, but we think we can get the lender to agree to a year. I'm not sure, sir, about a hundred and eighty days.
So if we did a year, that would be November twenty-sixth. We're all still here through then. Anything preventing that? I'm not opposed to that.
I'm not opposed to the one year, if that.
And that gives us a year to?
I don't, I mean, I believe this project is, is, is good. And so if we're, if we're moving forward with that, I believe, I don't think we're going to have without cause reason at this point. No one uses the top floor of the parking garage, except we do have a constable that exercises up there, but that's about, that's about it. At this point, no one's parking up there. In, in fact, we have a few that are parking on the fourth floor right now. But we do know we'll have more people coming to park after we get courthouse completed.
You, you recall, we will also have more open parking spaces.
We will have our old juror lot that we're going to have as well.
When we get everything back.
So I'm, I'm good with a year on this. Any, I guess, y'all want to take a, a vote on that? At this point, the language would be for without, without cause, stretch that out to a year. And then everything else as was written in that lease agreement. Good with that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, then do we have a motion to do so?
I'll make that motion.
That's a commission, that's a motion by Commissioner Moore.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Harret. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations.
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. Miller.
All right. That takes us to, thank y'all for being here as well. Item number six, considering take necessary action to approve the fiscal year twenty-six public service center local agreement between Smith County and Andrews Center, authorize county judge sign all related documentation. Mr. Wilson.
Yes, Judge and Commissioners, this is an annual item that we do. This is to fund the, our, our portion to fund the Andrews Center, and we recommend approval. And this was approved through the budget.
Yeah. Comments or questions on that? I'd entertain a motion then to approve that fiscal year twenty-six public service center local agreement between Smith County and Andrews Center.
So moved.
That's a motion by Commissioner Drew.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Harret. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven, consider and take necessary action to cast Smith County's votes and approve a resolution casting votes to elect candidates to serve on the Smith County Appraisal District Board of Directors pursuant to Texas Tax Code six point zero three and six point zero three zero one. And I'm getting down to that, we actually have two candidates. Annie Dwyer was one of our, has served, but she will no longer be serving. So she's declined, respectfully declined the nomination. So we now have Mark Watley is one of the, one of the candidates, and James Sheridan is who we nominated. So it would be my, my thought that we would cast two hundred, we have two hundred and forty-six total votes, so two hundred to James Sheridan and forty-six to Mark Watley, if, if that sounds good to everyone.
I'll second that.
All right, so that was my motion then, two hundred and then forty-six to Mr. Watley. We have a second.
Judge, if you could, just to clarify for the record, I want to make sure, two hundred votes to James Sheridan and forty-six votes.
To Mark Watley. That's correct. That's correct. And let's see, we have a, a motion and a second to approve the resolution casting those votes to serve on the Smith County Appraisal District Board of Directors. So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number eight, considering take necessary action to approve a commercial crime insurance policy renewal proposal in the amount of twenty thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars for McGriff Insurance Services LLC and authorize county judge sign all related documentation. Mr. Wilson.
Yes, Judge and Commissioners, it doesn't seem like it's been a year, but I guess it has been a year since we approved the initial crime insurance policy for McGriff LLC. And so this is to renew that and to move forward with protecting our county IT infrastructure. And that is a two thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollar premium for that proposal. I believe that remains the same amount as the last proposal that we did.
It's actually twenty thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine.
Twenty thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars, yes.
All right. Any comments or questions after that correction? I would entertain a motion then to approve the commercial crime insurance policy renewal proposal in the amount of twenty thousand, seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars for McGriff Insurance Services LLC.
So moved.
That's a motion by Commissioner Caraway.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Moore. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number nine, considering take necessary action to approve a resolution from the Texas Department of Agriculture, Texans Feeding Texans Home Delivered Meal Grant Program for fiscal year twenty-six, Meals on Wheels Ministry Grant Funding and authorize county judge sign all related documentation. Ms. Smith, do you have anything to add to that?
And the fifteen thousand was budgeted in the FY twenty-six budget.
All right. Any comments or questions from the court? And I would entertain a motion to approve that resolution for the Texans Feeding Texas Home Delivered Meal Grant Program for fiscal year twenty-six, Meals on Wheels Ministry Grant Funding and authorize county judge sign all related documentation.
So moved.
That's a motion by Commissioner Harret.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Caraway. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now we're down to agenda item ten, and I hate to do this to you, but we're going to take a, about a five-minute break for the court to take a little recess, and then we'll come back in for item ten. Okay, so possibly ten minutes. All right, thank you. All right, welcome back. That was a well-needed break for a lot of us, get to move around. Let's see, we're to item number ten, which is considering take necessary action to approve the precinct four constable's office to enter into a memorandum of agreement, two eighty-seven G Task Force Model with Immigration and Customs Enforcement and authorize county judge sign all necessary documentation. Mr. Joplin, Constable Joplin will come up and speak in a moment, but we do have some, quite a few speakers that want to speak. So I'm, I'm going to start going through the list here. Veronica Hernandez, this is as we received them. Is Veronica here? Oh, this is one that said, oh, this is. Okay. Oh, okay, okay. Then we have Estefany Del Rio. Okay, come forward, please.
Hello, good morning. Thank you for your time. So my name is Estefany Del Rio. I'm the proud daughter of immigrants. My daughter sacrificed, my father sacrificed everything so I could have opportunities he never had. Today, I want to honor him by speaking up against something I know is wrong. Programs like two eighty-seven G put families like mine in constant fear. Parents are afraid to, to drive to work. Children are growing up wondering if their families could be torn apart at any moment. This is not normal. This is not right. Even worse, two eighty-seven G fuels racism and hate. It gives permission to treat immigrants and anyone who looks like one as less than human. On local social media, people cheer when families are detained and celebrate when workers are deported. This creates real division. Neighbors stop trusting each other, people are afraid to ask for help, afraid to speak their language, even afraid to go to the store to get necessities. Judgment replaces understanding, and cruelty replaces compassion. Smith County should be a place of safety and dignity for everyone, no matter their last name, accent, or skin color. Rejecting 287G is not about policy, it's about protecting humanity. I hope to make my father proud by standing for what is right. And I hope you choose to stand for what is right as well. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Ms. Del Rio. All right, next up is Mr. Jeremy Flowers.
Hello, Judge and Commissioners. I emailed each of you sources on the data I'm gonna be referencing today. My name's Jeremy Flowers, I currently serve as the Director of Coordinated Community Response at the East Texas Crisis Center. Our mission is to provide safety, shelter, and hope to survivors of intimate partner violence and sexual assault. I want to speak towards the adverse effects of public safety. Texas-based studies, national research, and federal oversight reports all show consistent patterns, which is that when local law enforcement expands immigration enforcement, survivors become less likely to seek help. A Texas study by the Human Rights Initiative found that after 287G expansion in Travis County, community organizations documented a visible climate shift, which means fewer people attend in public programs and more fear-based avoidance of services. The ACLU of Texas reports that community members, including U.S. citizens, become significantly less likely to report crimes or seek assistance. We are seeing that same pattern here in Smith County. Our Hispanic and Latino communities are showing increased hesitancy about traveling. Research from the Migration Policy Institute confirms what we observe. Expanding the agreement to the constable will increase fear. At our organization, the policy is to rely on telehealth only when absolutely necessary. Yet since the 287G partnership with the sheriff's office, we've seen a significant increase in requests for telehealth services from survivors. That's who are U.S. citizens requesting online services solely because they fear being stopped. Last week, our staff attended an event in Chapel Hill Junior High. These events typically draw a large participation from families of color. The attendance was significantly lower. These are not abstract concerns, these shifts directly impact public safety. Research consistently shows that when families fear immigration enforcement, whether or not it personally applies to them, they avoid schools, they avoid hospitals, they avoid counseling, and most critically, they avoid calling 911, even in life-threatening situations. Our goal for all of Smith County is to increase access to safety, not introduce new barriers to it. One of the most powerful barriers that survivors face is fear of being separated from their children. And when we introduce policies to elevate this fear, even if unintentionally, it decreases their ability to seek safety. For these reasons, I respectfully ask the court to consider the documented impact on public safety as you evaluate this expansion. A safer Smith County depends on survivors and community members feeling safe enough to come forward when they need it most. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Flowers. All right, next up is Ms. Delilah Reynoso. To agenda... Okay, okay. We have next, Mr. Nick Pacina Jr.
Well, I think it's still morning. Good morning, Judge Franklin, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak on item 10. My name is Nick Pacina, I'm a local attorney, and I'm also the son of an immigrant mother who came to this country without legal status and later became a proud, naturalized American citizen. She raised me to love this country and to respect the rule of law, which is why I'm here today. Everyone in this room, everyone in the lobby, everyone outside, regardless of their political views or background, agrees on one thing: None of us want dangerous criminals in our community. When used properly, the 287G warrant model and jail model can quickly remove individuals who pose a legitimate threat. That's never been in dispute, and I'm not arguing that it's in dispute today. What is being presented today, however, is different. The task force model applies immigration enforcement to anyone, even a classy misdemeanor. So that means a broken taillight, an expired registration, or driving without a license suddenly becomes the gateway to immigration screening. That is not the targeted enforcement most people believe this program is about. I also want to remind the court of what Constable Joplin said during the budget process, Commissioner Drury. He made it very clear that his office did not receive the additional funding for staffing or equipment it requested, however, and that his office was already carrying a heavy workload. If staffing and resources were insufficient a few months ago, it is hard to understand why the constable would now seek to add federal enforcement responsibilities on top of everything else his department does. Calling this "just following the law" does not change the reality that this is, in effect, an unfunded federal mandate being voluntarily taken on by a small, already-stretched department. Also, I want to bring up a concern that Commissioner Caraway brought up about racial profiling. I encourage this court to request monthly reporting to monitor the arrests and the booking patterns. The community deserves to know whether non-Latino residents are being arrested for classy misdemeanors at the same rate as Latino residents. If this court chooses to move forward with the 287G program, I urge you to consider the warrant execution model instead of the task force model. The warrant model focuses on individuals who are already fugitives or already pose legitimate threats, and the task force model sweeps far broader, makes our community less safe, and ultimately increases the cost for taxpayers by reducing trust and cooperation in our community. My biggest concern, and one of the things that I think needs to be highlighted, is if a U.S. resident child or teenager is a victim of a crime and their parents maybe aren't legal residents, you think they're gonna call the cops? You think they're gonna call Constable Joplin to help in that situation? I think they're gonna think twice, and that's the chilling effect that we're concerned about. So, we all want dangerous people off our streets. I think the warrant model is the appropriate model, and the jail model that we've had for a long time in this county is the right model. And if this is not about seeking federal reimbursement, then this is nothing more than a voluntary, unfunded federal mandate. Thank you, and most of you are friends of mine, and I remain available to talk if you want to. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Pacina. All right, next up is Ms. Catherine Roots.
Judge and Commissioners, thank you for allowing me to speak today. I'm here in support of allowing Constable Josh Joplin, Precinct 4, to participate in the 287G program, because at the heart of this request is a simple and universal goal: Keeping every member of our community safe, no exceptions, no favoritism, and absolutely no room for discrimination. Our county is home to a diverse and growing population. Our residents want to know when someone is taken into custody for committing a crime, the process that follows is consistent, fair, and thorough, regardless of who that person is or where they come from. The 287G program helps ensure exactly that. It provides a structured, transparent way for local officers to coordinate with federal partners and verify information accurately. Frederick Bastiat once said, "The law is justice." That simple truth reminds us that the strength of our legal system is measured by how fairly and consistently it is applied. Supporting this program is about upholding the principle right here at home. This is not about targeting anyone based on race, background, or appearance. It is about ensuring that every case is handled according to the same clear standards so that our community can trust the process from start to finish. Fairness builds trust, and trust builds safer neighborhoods for everyone. Constable Joplin is not asking for new funding or expanded authority, he is asking for the opportunity he deserves to participate in a program that enhances accuracy, cooperation, and accountability within the system we already have. Many counties across Texas use this program successfully, not to single out any group, but to ensure procedures remain reliable and consistent. Good governance means using tools available to support order, transparency, and fairness. When local federal agencies communicate effectively, it prevents administrative gaps and strengthens public confidence in how the law is carried out and saves taxpayer dollars. This request is not about national politics, it is about local responsibility, doing what we can to ensure our community remains safe, respected, and well-served. Judge, Commissioners, the people of Smith County expect steady, principled leadership. Allowing Constable Joplin to participate in the 287G program is a practical step that strengthens public trust and reinforces the idea that justice applies equally to everyone. I respectfully ask you to approve this request. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Roots. All right, next up is Edgar R. Mencia? Mencia? All right, come forward, please.
Hello, good morning. My name is Marcos Renteria Lopez. I'm a proud father of five kids here in the Smith County in Tyler, Texas. Ages range from five years to 44. Today is my first son's birthday, November 18. He is 44 today. I've been here in Tyler for a long time. I see a little bit of everything. In the Smith County, I watch Tyler grow. I remember right here where we stand today, it used to be Jay Zepini. Long time ago, way back in the 70s. And I watch the Spanish community blooming in East Texas. Tyler is an excellent place to live and raise a family. I love the pines of East Texas, and I'm very concerned about what I see and hear in our community. People are afraid, people are concerned, people have that on mind that that may be stopped. Quite frankly, no reason. I mean, they have to get out of their house because their children's at home, and bringing it back, and so many fear that in the way from point A to point B, we stop and never see their kids again. And that's a big concern and also put a lot of risk. And those people who driving from point B to point A with that concern on their mind that can have an accident, they can have anything happen just to be thinking because that eyes present here in Tyler and the county chair, you know, prosecuting immigrants, that put people to think. And there's a non-say way of driving around Tyler. The parents are all saying, when they go and pick their children, they don't have that on their mind. Why the Spanish community? Immigrants, this country has bloom, has, is the greatest country on earth, thanks to immigrants. We all are immigrants. We on this land, we don't have nowhere else to go. And we like to keep our community safe, and we like, you know, to protect our citizens. Crime is here, is real, but always will be. It has been for thousands of years in the past, and it will continue. To put remedy on that and to move in that direction, that's a good strategy. Yes, it is. And we need to attack criminals. I'm in favor on that, but immigrants, families that work hard, they're honest people, humble people, they're only trying to go to work and make ends meet. What's wrong with that?
Thank you, sir, we appreciate you. Thank you.
So my time is a sour, huh?
Yeah. All right, thank you. All right, next up is, let's see here, Shannon Reaume? I don't, I know I'm butchering that last name. R-E-A-U-M-E? Okay. All right, next up is Daniel Alders.
Thank you, Judge and Commissioners. My name is Daniel Alders, and I am a constituent in Precinct 2. I'm also a state representative for Tyler and Smith County. And I'm here today to speak in favor of this agenda item. I want to begin by stating the obvious. The concept of the rule of law is one of the foundational principles of our American republic. Inscribed on the west portico of the Supreme Court Building in DC are these words, "Equal Justice Under Law." In our nation, the law is intended to be blind to race, class, or creed. It is to be objective, so that no man is above the law and no man below it, in the words of Teddy Roosevelt. The proposal before you today, expanding the cooperation of local law enforcement agencies with federal agencies in order to uphold the rule of law and protect our communities, is a good thing. And allowing local cooperation provides for local enforcement of the law, which is what, frankly, we should want for Smith County and our precincts. This is not about enforcing some newly invented laws on the books. This is not about targeting any particular group of people. This is about apprehending criminals, those who break the law in our community, and making sure that we keep East Texans safe. So I encourage you to vote in favor, and thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Alders. Next up is Ms. Cheryl Hazelwood. Ms. Hazelwood, okay.
Good morning, and thank you for this opportunity to speak. And I did check, it is still morning. I believe in our law enforcement people at all levels. And so, I think that the focus is not so much the way this law affects people, because what we're looking at is approving additional training and equipment that will be reimbursed so that our law enforcement people will get more benefits from the training and will get more equipment. I want them to be, have as much equipment as they can possibly use that will help them to do their jobs. We're not looking for a witch hunt, we're looking for, in the course of their duties, if they come across someone who is in the state illegally and is committing a crime, then those people need to be removed. When I break the law, I suffer the consequences, but only one ticket so far. But I break minor laws, which is no excuse, but I suffer the consequences of my actions. If someone is breaking federal law by coming into this country illegally, then yes, that produces anxiety, and I can't help that. The law should be applied, the consequences will be whatever the law provides. Thank you for this time, and I appreciate your work.
Thank you, Ms. Hazelwood. Next up is Ms. Joanne Fleming.
Good day, Judge and Commissioners. Uh, for the record, I'm Joanne Fleming. I am representing Grassroots America, We the People Political Action Committee. It is the oldest and largest citizen action committee in the state of Texas, and we are based here in Smith County. Today, I want to tell you that without reservation, we support Constable Joplin's initiative to join the 287G Task Force. We also want to go on record supporting the Smith County deputies who have already been trained in the 287G Task Force. The 287G Task Force was a necessary program brought by the Trump administration because the 287G warrant program and the jail program are two totally different things. The task force is additional boots on the ground. Seventy-two percent of Smith County voters support these efforts to return to the rule of law and public safety. They have a reasonable expectation, excuse me, a reasonable expectation that you will do everything you can to, um, uphold their wishes when they voted in November of 2024 for President Trump. DPS has long ranked Smith County very high on its risk assessment for border-related criminal enterprises because of I-20. If you check DPS reports through the years, you will see that those risk assessments have us as the same classification of risk as border counties. DHS has identified more than three hundred thousand missing foreign children in our country. Part of ICE's responsibility is to help locate those children, to make sure that they are safe and not in the hands of traffickers. Law enforcement's purpose is to protect the homeland. There are twenty-nine legal ports of entry in the state of Texas. Choices have consequences. We strongly urge you to support Constable Joplin and to continue to support the efforts of the Smith County deputies as they work to keep our community safe. Please remember your oath to uphold the Constitution and the rule of law. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fleming. Next up is Jacqueline Garcia.
Hi, you guys. I want to say good morning and thank you guys for being, uh, listening here today. Never done this before, so I'm going to try to talk as fast as I can for my three minutes. But I'm speaking on behalf of people in our community that are not able to use their voices right now, that are forced to keep quiet. Today, I am using my privilege for all the families affected by this in our community. Immigration reform is not just about a political issue, it is a human issue. It is about protecting families, honoring contributions, and recognizing the dignity of people who have lived here, worked here, and loved this country their entire lives. This next section is written by someone here in our community. So I proceed now. I'm writing this letter to express the deep importance of immigration reform for families like mine and for many individuals who have lived, lived in this country for most of their lives. Many of us grew up here, raised our children here, built our futures here, and have contributed to our communities in every way possible. This country is our home in every sense of the word except on paper. I come from a strong, single mother and a woman who sacrificed everything to provide a better family for her and her children, a better life for her and her children. Her strength, resilience, and love shaped who I am today. Like so many immigrant parents, she worked tirelessly, contributed to her community, and never gave up hope, even when the system made life harder than it needed to be. Today, I am walking the same path. I am a single mother myself. I work hard every day to provide for my children, to raise them with values, to keep them safe and to show, show them what it means to be a good human being. I contribute to my community with pride, I support local businesses, I follow the law, and do everything I can to be a positive present, presence in the place I call home. Yet despite living responsibly and doing everything as of me, immigration laws still affect me deeply. They affect my daily life, my stability, my peace, and the future I am trying to build for my children. No mother, single or not, should have to live with the fear that at any moment her life could be disrupted or her family could be torn apart. My children depend on me, they love me, they deserve safety, consistency, and the comfort of knowing their mother is not at risk of being taken away from them. Immigrants play an essential role in the strength of our communities. We work hard, we pay taxes, we support local businesses, we volunteer, we help our neighbors thrive. We show up every day with dedication and pride, doing our part to build a better future for our families and for the places we call home. But despite everything we contribute, many of us live with a constant fear, the fear of being separated from our families, especially our children. No parent should have to wake up wondering if they will be taken away from their son or daughter. Children who know no other home, children who depend on us, love us, and deserve stability and safety. Family is the heart of every community, and immigration reform is essential to keeping families together and protecting the well-being of our future generations. And to our community that has risen up in solidarity with immigrant families, thank you. Your support has given us strength to those who feel powerless. Your unity has shown that compassion is stronger than fear, and your willingness to stand besides us makes the, makes all the difference. I ask that you can continue to fight for us, to speak for us, and to help create policies that reflect fairness, compassion, and the true values of this nation. Thank you for taking the time to listen into our story and considering the lives and futures of countless hard-working families. With hope and gratitude and lots of love, Jacqueline Garcia.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia. Next up is Mr. Ron Gleason. Anybody outside, guys, back in the lobby, or? All right. Next up is Mr. Thomas Mutrynowski? Mutrynowski? No? Next up is Victoria Rujo Trillo?
Uh, she's not here, sir.
Okay. All right, no problem. Thank you. Uh, next up is Erica Cuevas. Next up is Mark Medhauer? Mark Medhauer? All right, Mr. Medhauer.
It's my tire. Good morning, Commissioners, Judge. I'm here today to, in strong support of Precinct Four, Constable Joplin's request to join the federal 287G program and partner with ICE. Thank you for allowing me to speak. Public safety is the number-one job of government, and no one deserves safe streets more than the families in rural parts of the county. The 287G program is a proven voluntary and fully legal tool that lets our local deputies identify and remove dangerous criminal illegal aliens who have already been arrested for breaking our laws. People charged with or convicted of serious crimes like assault, drug trafficking, DUI, gang activity, or worse. This isn't about targeting immigrants. This is about targeting criminals. The program operates under strict ICE supervision, with trained officers focusing only on those already in custody for state or local crimes. Across Texas and the nation, 287G partnerships have led to thousands of removals of individuals with criminal records, making communities safer. In counties already using 287G, we've seen real results. Quicker identification of repeat offenders, fewer dangerous criminals released back into our streets, and stronger cooperation between local deputies and federal agents. Rural areas like ours shouldn't be left behind while bigger counties get this extra layer of protection. Our neighbors, neighborhoods, schools, and families deserve the same peace of mind. Some may protest this program, but ask yourself, who opposes getting violent offenders off our streets faster? Supporting the Precinct Four Constable Joplin today means standing with law enforcement and saying yes to safer communities for all residents, citizens, and lawful immigrants alike. Please approve this partnership, criminals off our streets, and a safer county for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Next up is Ms. Cheryl, no, Sherry L. Fuller, Ms. Sherry Fuller. Not in the room? Next up is James Fuller. Now we have, um, let's see, Julian Martinez? Oh, he already spoke. All right. Thanks, sir. Kathleen Kramer.
Hello? My name is Kathleen Kramer. I'm twenty-nine years old. I've lived here in Texas for twenty-five years. As you can tell by my white skin, my blue eyes, and blonde hair, I'm a citizen of the United States of America, or at least that's what ICE would like you to think. And you wouldn't know it, but the shawl I'm wearing was actually made by an immigrant, my grandmother. She moved here fifty years ago from England, the original immigration country. And in all my years of knowing her, not once was she ever asked about her immigration status, because she too was white with blue eyes and blonde hair. But that shouldn't be the factors by which law enforcement identifies and distinguishes a citizen versus non, or a criminal, criminal versus noncriminal. But these are the tactics, tactics used by ICE, racial profiling at its finest. If you're white enough or speak English well enough, you are not their target. This is a serious problem. When my own cousin, who's a Filipino Native American woman, has left the state because she no longer feels safe to live here with her brown skin, black hair, and brown eyes. My best friend has pulled her children out of public school in favor of homeschooling them because they are mixed. And even though she is white herself, the color of her kids may, may become problematic, as it has already become problematic for others in similar complexions. ICE does not conduct themselves as law enforcement should. When you go against the Constitution and due process, you go against all people. When you racially profile, you are against the people. We are a nation of immigrants. Just ask my grandmother. I used to be so proud of this nation and of this state. My family has a long line of veteran service for this country, and I was raised on a military base here in Texas. I was raised knowing that the person next to me, no matter what they looked like, was my family and my support, because in the military, you're not a color, you're a uniform. And everyone sacrifices for the greater good of our people, and immigrants are our people too. And in fact, they're more than that. They are the backbone of this society and what the American dream was made for. But ICE and this administration has killed this dream. When my cousin feels so unsafe to live here as a Native American, not only, the only kind of person who truly has a right to this land fled north to keep herself safer. This is not the America I love. And not only that, for those who say they're here to stop crime, start at home. Because anytime I have been assaulted, or stalked, or had something done to me, it was always from an American citizen. And the one time that I needed help, when my car broke down in the middle of an intersection because my transmission failed, all these American citizens just drove right past me, stuck. The only person to stop and help me was a man who could barely speak English with lawn mowers in the back of his truck. So you can't say that this is actually about crime and criminality. Just say the truth. Say no to ICE and make it safer for all of my family to be here, not just the white ones. Do your duty to protect the people of the city against these agents of discrimination. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Kramer. All right, next up is Grace Delgado.
Hi, good morning. My name is Grace, and my four siblings and I are the children that were left behind. Our mom Diana was taken away from us November fifth. That day forever changed her lives. And I'm sorry. Um, it's something that we won't forget, that feeling whenever he told us, "Our mom is never gonna, is not coming home." I am the second oldest, and now I'm in charge of taking care of my younger brothers, who are eight and twelve years old. And I choose to do so out of fear, because I don't want my dad to be taken too. I do their laundry, I clean for them, get them ready for school, and cook. It's really hard because my tobyo brother, Brian, has a medical and food allergy. He must carry an EpiPen on him at all times. These are things my mom would do for all of us, special for him, that he could only eat certain things. I am only eighteen years old, a full-time student at UT Tyler, working a part-time job. This is the worst thing that has happened to us. My mom was everything to me and to them. We miss our mom, we cry for her every day. I hate that I can't see, hug her, or kiss her. We miss her so much, we're only able to speak to her a few minutes every few days. We are not, we are told things will get better, but I don't see how. We don't know when or if she will be coming back home, because we need our mom. My little brothers want to know why did you take our mom away? She has lived here for over twenty years. Our mom is not a bad person, much less a criminal. She was, when she was taken, she was not doing anything wrong. She was the passenger in the car. This is the first time my mom has ever been arrested. Did anyone think about us kids and how the 287G Task Force model agreement would negatively change and impact our life forever? Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you, Ms. Delgado. Next up is Mr. Randy Reeves.
Good morning to y'all. My name is Randy Reeves. I am the chairman of Precinct 454 now, used to be Precinct 52. Some people may not know that as precinct chairman, we're the first level of representative government. Thus, I stand before you today as that voice for the over twenty-five hundred people that are in my precinct that are for law and order. We're, we're a for common sense approach too. So thus, I would keep it short and say this. I feel like I know my constituency. They would be for this, to support Joplin, Mr. Joplin. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Reeves. Now, Mr. John Gibson.
Good morning. John Gibson from Lindell. Thank you for, uh, supporting this today. I hope you will. Um, I, I think one of the things that occurred to me, listening here today, you honored a bunch of military veterans. How are our local, state, and federal employees, like the one standing behind me, any different than them? We gave all the resources to defend our national borders to those veterans, and you have an opportunity today to give all the refor, all of the necessary tools to our local, state, and federal law enforcement, in your case, just the locals. Here's that opportunity. Listening to, to Josh Joplin last week explain how it would be implemented here, it's a tool that he needs to make law enforcement better. We've been overwhelmed for the last four years by some really extraordinary circumstances. Extraordinary circumstances require extra tools. And I just remind you, there was a book written many years ago, um, called Rules for Radicals by Saul Alinsky, and he explained how to defeat America, and it was called Overwhelming the System. What you're watching, what's in the street out in front of us, is us being overwhelmed. The added expenses, the, the, the expense of undoing what has been done and try to get undesirable criminal aliens back where they started. criminal aliens back where they started is going to cost us all a lot of money, just to mention a small part of it. So I'd appreciate your vote today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson. Now we have Annel Aguilar. If you would state your name, so I hope I didn't butcher it.
You actually did really well, so thank you for that. I'm gonna be speaking on the Agenda Item Number 10, of course. I want to say good morning to everybody. I don't have the time. Judge and members of the Commissioners Court, everyone that's here today. My name is Annel Aguilar, and I am a U.S. citizen born and raised in Tyler, Texas. I am here today to share my thoughts with you all. Implementing 287G Task Force model in Tyler Precinct Four is not just law enforcement decision, it's a community trust decision. When local police becomes ICE agents, immigrants stop calling 911. Families live in fear, kids lose parents. This does not make us safer. It tears our community apart. Rather than deputize local officers for federal deportation tasks, we should invest in community safety, not immigration policing. 287G does not protect Tyler. It separates families, it destroys trust, it makes our community less safe. It is important to remember that simple being, that simply being undocumented is a civil matter, not a criminal one. The law treats it the same way it treats most traffic violations. If someone speeds or rolls through a stop sign, it's a civil infraction that they can be fined or ordered to appear in court, but they aren't treated as criminals because no criminal law was broken. Immigration status works the same way. People without legal status may face civil immigration proceedings, but they are not committing a crime by just being here. Treating a civil matter like a criminal one or involving local police is what is legally a federal civil issue. It creates fear in the community without improving public safety. Our officers should stay focused on real crime, not on civil violations that the federal government itself classifies the same way it classifies a speeding ticket. I want to remind everyone of a fact that federal law makes very clear, being undocumented is not a crime. The Supreme Court confirmed this in Arizona versus United States, saying unlawful presence is a civil matter, not a criminal offense. The only criminal statute, A U.S. Code Section 1325, applies only to the act of crossing the border, not to the families who are already living and working here in our community. When we treat a civil violation like a criminal one, we hurt our own people. I am not in favor of you all passing the 287G Task Force model. It is wrong. It will destroy trust between police and the community. It will encourage profiling and abuse, even though you may not think so. You are not a person of color, so you, you won't know that. It damages family and our local economy. Tyler depends on immigrant labor, agriculture, construction, food service, hospitality, and childcare. I think that is my time, but I made my point clear, so thank you for hearing me today.
Thank you, Ms. Aguilar. Next up is Ms. Pam Burton.
I'll be very brief. I do speak from the heart, and it is not a hard heart. I do appreciate all the comments that I'm being heard today. I truly do love all people, and I appreciate the energy, the innovation, and the enthusiasm that immigrants bring to our nation. But I also love the fact that we are a sovereign nation and a nation of laws. We do have a legal path for immigration, so I encourage the Commission to uphold 287G Task Force. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Burton. All right. Victoria Oliveras.
Good morning, Commissioners, neighbors, and members of the Smith County community. Again, my name is Victoria Oliveras, and I stand here today because of our county, our community, i nuestra gente, within Smith County. What's being called public safety is, in truth, a system that harms families, weakens justice, and destroys the bond between our law enforcers and our people. I am 20 years old, born from the blood of immigrants, and a full-time student here in Tyler. I've gone through both TJC and UT Tyler systems. But Agenda Item 10 is something that we should oppose strongly. So let's go into what people have been saying. People are going to say that justice is blind. We are humans. The enforcers are biased. Our laws are supposed to be equal and are supposed to remove bias, but the people actually making the arrest are the ones who are biased. There's no way to properly remove bias and prejudiced beliefs behind all of this, even with the system, even with the training involved. Secondly, don't be swayed with strong man terms. Citizens and non-citizens will commit the same crimes. Don't be swayed just by individuals bringing up different statistics that solely involve immigrants, because citizens do it too, and citizens in the Tyler community do it as well. Do it legally. This is something that many individuals don't understand the process of. Many of the people who are saying that doing it the legal route is easy, but it's not. It's difficult, many people will be denied, and many of my own family members and people that I know have died before they even reached being a proper citizen. And let's look at real stories. I work at a dental clinic. Entire families have canceled and refused to show up out of fear, even after we have reassured them that they will not be detained, but they still don't show up, showing that people are avoiding necessary healthcare treatments. I am a college student. All of your Tyler students are either afraid for themselves or for their own individual families. We're leading up to finals now, and it's removing our focus from educational needs that we need to focus on. People are afraid. Every time I go on social media, like every other person, I see that people are begging for help, begging for their children to be taken to school, begging for people to pick up their groceries, begging for people to take them to work, because they are afraid to go out on themselves, simply because they don't have the same documentation as you and I. But it's because of your previous votes and this current vote that it's going to worsen. Families have been torn apart. You've already heard individuals talking about this. Since the reimbursement especially, look at the numbers. Most, if not all, people that have been detained since the last voting are Hispanic and Latino. Agenda Item 10 is simply wrong. Sheriff's deputies are already working hand-in-hand with ICE. They already have the authority. Expanding it is going to do nothing but worsen the damage that has already been caused to individual communities, our Smith County communities, and the people that call Smith County home are suffering because of this. So I leave with just one last question. Jesus was a refugee, an immigrant. Would you choose to keep enforcing and deport him? Because simply put, with the current laws that we have right now on the federal level, ICE would. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Oliveras. Next one is Carrie Anne Ledesma. Carrie Anne?
My name is Carrie Ledesma, and although I'm Republican, I'm outraged in the way that our current administration is handling our immigration situation. I do agree that Biden's border tactics did need to be stopped, but I do not agree with the 287G Task Force program, and am requesting you do not participate. It infuriates me to watch the peace and trust of our communities be ripped apart. Our current administration is tasking our protectors, our law enforcement, to hunt these so-called criminals that have broken into our country, when the fact is, most of these so-called illegals did actually enter our country legally and are part of the 11.3 million total immigration cases pending in USCIS. Instead of hiring more officers to process these applications and deport or grant legal status to these immigrants, they have laid off 672 employees, then proceeded to budget $75 billion and employed 33,000 new ICE officers to hunt these people down. They have labeled them as criminals to make your heart feel good, but the truth is, the majority are not criminals at all. They are victims of the never-ending executive orders that have stripped their legal statuses, and those same powers are now asking you to strip our constitutional rights against unlawful search and seizure and terrorize our communities so that they don't have to do their job. Under Biden, approximately 936,000 immigrants used the app CPB One, seek an asylum, and made appointments at our Border Patrol offices along the southern border. These people went to their appointments, were fingerprinted, they explained their circumstances to immigration officials, and were made to sign contracts. If the official thought that their case was valid, the immigrant was paroled into the United States where they could start their asylum process. The contract laid out what was expected and what would happen if they didn't follow those expectations. If their asylum case was not approved, these immigrants face 10-year bar from the U.S. These people were given work permits or paying taxes, Social Security, Medicare, and were able to get licenses, even in Texas. These immigrants have to report where they live and can be called at any time to check into local immigration offices. The Trump administration has since terminated many of their protective statuses that allow these immigrants to be paroled in the U.S. and are enticing them to self-deport, offering them $1,000 and no 10-year bar. Now, even though that their protective status has been terminated, their case is still pending. If they leave the U.S., their case can be terminated because it shows that their fear of their country wasn't great enough to stay in the U.S. Then they even went further in revoking immigration judges the ability to allow these people to bond out of jail. So if they're detained, they have two options: return to their country and risk the danger of what they ran from, plus terminating their asylum case, or send ICE custody until their case is complete, which can take years. Now, I do not agree with how Biden created this disaster, but the facts are, these people came into our country legally, and our government is now asking you to be the bad guy, mask the Superman, to hunt them down. The worst part is the hatred, racist, and the havoc that it's causing in our community. Si me escucharon en mi trabajo, con el nombre de Carrie Anne, sin ver a mi pie, sin ver a mi cara, también me iban a preguntar por mis papeles. But because I am white, and I have the name of Carrie Anne, I don't have to worry about answering that question. My kids don't have the same privilege, and that is racial profiling.
That's time. Thank you, Ms. Ledesma. Thank you. All right. Marcos Renteria?
He already spoke.
He has? Okay. Nancy Nichols? Ms. Nancy Nichols? Okay.
My name is Dr. Nancy Nichols, and I'm president of the Northeast Chapter of the National Organization for Women, which is the largest women's organization in the United States. But I live here in Smith County. I am against 287G, and I'm asking you to vote no on Josh Joplin's plan to bring 287G into our area. Let me say that I have known and trusted Commissioner Josh Joplin for many years. Traditionally, our constables have been the peacekeeping force our community relies on, until now. Now, I leave my home in Swan, and before I get to the loop, I see ICE patrol cars hunting humans. On social media, I see local ICE-trained officers going door-to-door. Commissioners, these are the same tactics that we see in Reals from Nazi Germany. These tactics are painfully similar to the KKK tactics using dogs to hunt black Americans. Statistics show 287G is not effectively catching violent criminals. It's detaining workers, parents, and neighbors. When workers are detained, and shoppers stay home, and children are afraid to go to school, and you know, every time a child stays home from school, that's money that doesn't come into our school district. And businesses suffer. Agriculture, construction, poultry, and service industries are already struggling to find workers. We know this. Supply chains weaken, and our local economy takes the hit. 287G is expensive, and Smith County has carried that financial burden and will carry it until promised monies come down from the federal government. Our economy is what you are elected to protect. What it looks like as a worker, a taxpayer, and a voter is that an extra $7,500 for each of the 32 officers is a lot of future votes for anyone with eyes on the sheriff position or any elected office. My question, what is the daily quota? Historically, we know that Hispanics don't vote, but that fact is changing as I speak and as you have been hearing. Again, I'm Dr. Nancy Nichols. I'm urging you to represent your people and vote no to 287G. Thank you, each one of you.
Thank you, Dr. Nichols. Next up is Mr. Kevin McCall.
There's not much more to be said about this hot button issue. I support 287G for, basically for this reason, because of where Smith County is. I-20 and 69 creates a corridor for people that have flooded our state over the past four years. That type of, that type of immigration has consequences, consequences on the taxpayer, that's a broader subject. Consequences for people like Commissioner Harrod and myself and Mr. Gibson with the arrival, or potential arrival, of the New World Screwworm, which is an invasive mortal pest that hitched a ride with immigrants over the Darien Gap and is now poised in northern Mexico to threaten the Texas livestock industry and wildlife and hunting. So those are the, the people that Constable Joplin will be looking for are not the people that have been here for long periods of time. That, that, that's not what this 287G is about. It's looking for people that came up over the past four years or so and have embedded into our community and have criminal backgrounds. Our immigrant, from a broader perspective, our immigration situation is likely going to have to be looked at. What we, what we're operating under now was passed back in 1965, to a large extent, by Senator Ted Kennedy. That is going to probably come full circle. There is an initiative by Representative Chip Roy to, let's, let's have a pause on immigration. Let's think about what we are doing with this issue. So I think that, that is my feelings on the subject. Support 287G. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McCall. Next up is Ms. Mary Ann Aiken.
Thank you for this opportunity.
Ms. Aiken, make sure you speak into the mic. You have a soft voice.
Is this better?
Yes.
All right. I didn't see Sheriff Smith here today, and I want, he's usually here, and I want to thank him for what he is doing for the immigrations, the illegals in this town. If you've not have noticed, on Facebook, and I'm there every now and then, he is posting pictures of who he's arresting and what their crimes are, and I really thank he and the deputies for that. I want to also vote yes on the 287G for Mr. Joplin. And I noticed that our other constables are here today. I don't usually see them. I hope that they will follow suit. I hope that they will follow suit. We need to support Sheriff Smith and what he's doing, and who better than the constables in their precincts to know what's going on? So, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Aiken. Next up is Mr. Bob Brewer.
Like Judge and Commissioners, may God's will be my life in His words. I disagree with everything that's been said here today. We are not a democracy. We are a constitutional republic that thanks to our founders, we leapt five thousand years of chaos, and we are devolving into that this moment. There is nobody in this courtroom, or even this county, that has spoken on the Constitution and the laws that we must follow to make the decisions we must make. The first sentence of the Bible is the first sentence of U.S. law. Laws of nature and nature's God, creation in the Bible. No human law should be suffered to contradict these, and everything we're doing is contradicting Since Christine is so good at getting meetings together, I would propose she aggregate her preachers and her voters to have regular meetings and roundtables to get us educated on that which we are so ignorant of. I have offered this and three other volumes of Blackstone's Commentaries to this body multiple times, only to be refused. The only thing our founders were studying eleven years before the Declaration was Blackstone's Commentaries on U.S. law. Abraham Lincoln read it twice and had it memorized. Charles Finney, probably the greatest evangelist and responsible for the greatest evangelist in the last two centuries. He was a lawyer. He read this more than seven times and began speaking for the Lord and our salvation. John Marshall, the greatest Supreme Court Chief Justice, read this four times. He got interrupted by camping out with George Washington at Valley Forge. So I cannot encourage more to everyone in this room that we learn Blackstone's Commentaries and Tucker's Blackstone that followed it, that incorporates everything of U.S. law, so that we know why we're sinning so badly today in this body, being a democracy instead of a republic. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Brewer. All right, I've got one last speaker signed up. Is there anybody else out there that signed up that I didn't call your name? All right, Mr. Hector Garza.
Thank you, Commissioners, Your Honor. My name is Hector Garza, and I represent the Democratic Party of Smith County, and I represent all the Latinos, all the white, all the black, and all the people standing outside to talk about this community, because this is not who we are. Tyler's always built, Tyler was always been built on trust, hard work, compassion, and diversity. By God, we've become the rose city capital, the rose capital of the world on whose brow, on whose brow. But I stand before you today to tell you that fifty years ago, I marched with my mother, with John Lewis, with Caesar Chavez, and with the Reverend Jesse Jackson, fighting the exact same war we are fighting today. It is inhumane. I hear the cries, and I've heard everything today about the law, Your Honor. I've heard about the law of this and the law of that. I agree. I'm one hundred percent in agreeance with you. I agree that every criminal, every drug dealer, every rapist, every murderer needs to be off our streets, and I'm the first one to get them off the streets. I agree with this one hundred percent. But you're not seeing the flip side of this. You are not seeing the videos of all the deputies and everybody pulling cars over and jerking people out of their car and not giving a half a chance. Before they get to jail, they already got an immigration hold on them with bonds of twenty and thirty thousand dollars, making it impossible to bond these people out. I know because case by case, people call me hundreds of calls all the time, weekly, saying, you know, can we bond them out? And I'm on the phone talking to bondsmen all the time, and no, we can't bond them out. They've got immigration holds. Like Grace Delgado's mother, who'd never had any interaction with the law at all, but she didn't have papers. She didn't have papers because we have a system that Democrats and Republicans on a federal level cannot get it together and not figure a way to citizenship or a path to give them citizenship. It is inhumane. People that have been in the system trying to get paperwork, these are not your drug dealers, these are not your criminals that we're trying to take off the streets. These are regular citizens that have been paying taxes in Tyler, Texas, and Smith County for twenty, thirty years. They've always been good enough. Now, all of a sudden, they're being targeted. Now, all of a sudden, they're not good enough. But what we don't see is the flip side. We don't see what the sheriff is, what the sheriff's office is doing and what many others participating in 287G are doing. They are pulling cars over. I had one just two days ago, and the gentleman told him, "Why did you pull me over?" There's video on this. And they said, "Because you have no insurance." It came up on air. How did, why did they pull it up? Because their brown-colored skin? They got pulled over and said, "You don't have insurance." And he said, "Yes, sir, I do. Let me give it to you." Before they had a chance to give it, both passenger and driver were pulled out of the vehicle and arrested, taken to detention, and now they can't get out of the system. They're stuck in there. They didn't have criminal records. They weren't the drugs, they weren't the, they weren't the drug dealers, the murderers, and everybody we want to get off the street. I'm all for it. Get these people off of the street. I'm all for it, and everybody out there is all for it. Get them off the street.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Garza. Your time is up. Thank you.
Judge, can I have fifteen seconds? I have one closing remark to make.
Closing statement.
Closing statement. Smith County, imagine a world where Hispanics, blacks, Muslim, Asian are the minority, and they are profiling and racially discriminating kids for being white. We are coming to this. We are teaching our children this. I ask you vote no, and at the very least, table this so that we can present video and show all the Commissioners and Your Honor. I thank you.
Thank you. Now, I'd like to introduce to you Constable Joplin. He's gonna come forward on Agenda Item Ten and talk about the 287G Task Force Model. Constable Joplin.
Good morning, Judge, Commissioners, and everybody in the, in the galley here. So I want to start off by saying that I know that I kind of made a Facebook post that kind of stated what we were gonna do this program for and why, but I think there's a vast bit of confusion as to the way that my office plans to implement this compared to what you're seeing on Facebook and videos and stories and things like that. My office' mission since January first of twenty seventeen was to take care of the citizens of Precinct Four and to provide them with a law enforcement agency that they could come to respect and know. We had a constable's office prior to me that I don't believe was as visible as what we are today. I believe that we have built the trust with our community to where they can rely on us for all their law enforcement needs within reason. I don't have the resources to work a lot of very heavy major crimes such as homicides and things like that. We try to deviate that to the sheriff's office. But I do know that our mission as a whole is to keep people safe. I know that with the new Senate Bill passing thirteen thirty-three for squatters in the state of Texas, that has put a large toll on constables and sheriffs as it pertains to the new way of getting people off of your property that have just shown up. There's no agreement, there's no lease, there's no rent, anything like that. When we come into contact with people on the street, whether it be as a traffic stop, whether it be on a call, whether it's for an eviction, the number one thing that we have to do is we have to be able to identify that person to know who we're dealing with. And if that person is not a resident, if they are not a citizen, it is very hard to ID them if they've never been handled within the criminal justice system. So the thing is, is the reason why we decided to join ICE and the reason why I've talked to my men about it that worked for me, this gives us a tool and a resource to be able to identify these people. Now, I want to touch on a little bit on the arresting criminals part, and I want to say this, I'm gonna turn a little bit so I can see everybody, if that's okay with you, Judge. I want to make it clear that I'm the constable. I don't work for the sheriff's office. I'm not the sheriff. And all these videos that people keep sending me, what the sheriff's office is doing or what the sheriff says he will do and won't do, that, that's on the sheriff, that's not on me. I run the constable's office, I'm responsible for the constable's office, and I think that most of, of you that know me, Ms. Nancy and Hector, I think y'all know me well enough to know that my oath is my bond, and I stand on business when I tell you something. And what I'm telling you right now is Class C misdemeanors such as traffic stops and things like that, when we stop a citizen who doesn't have a driver's license, we don't let them drive away. And we don't take them to jail either. Normally, we issue them a citation, but we normally either tow their vehicle or we call somebody to come get them. But if I see that person again driving, and we have to pull them over for speeding or running a stop sign or an equipment violation, and it's their second or third time, the point of work in traffic enforcement is to gain voluntary compliance of the law. It is not to create revenue. I'll be the first to tell you, I could write a million dollars in tickets a year, and that's not gonna get me any more money in my budget from this court. And I'm fixing to go over that here in a minute. So what I'm telling you is, we don't really write a whole lot of tickets, and I'm gonna show you that information here in a minute, too. What I am going to tell you is that when we do give warnings or we do give citations to whoever it is, citizen or non-citizen, we are asking them to obey the law. And if they continue to do what we ask them not to do, am I the reason that they're in jail, or are they the reason that they're in jail? That's the question that I have for you today. It's not law enforcement's fault that people break the law. Everyone is responsible for their own actions, whether you're a citizen or whether you're a non-citizen, it doesn't matter. The fear mongering that has gone on, and I want to apologize for this in advance, has not come from my office. I know that I've reached out to Mr. Garza, I've had a conversation with Mr. Pacina. I am willing to come and sit and have a meeting with anybody that wants to meet with me. I will debate a fence post. Go ask my dad. But the thing is, is I've been open. I invited Mr. Garza to my office yesterday to look at the racial profiling reports that I have. I even invited him to come and do a ride-along so we could go out and work traffic, so he can see what a traffic stop's like. I realize he's a busy man, he didn't get to make it. Hopefully, he takes me up on my offer, and I invite any of you to come out and work traffic with me. I will put you in the passenger seat, and I will show you what being a cop's all about. The fear mongering has got to stop. My office will not, will not do immigration enforcement of any kind at a school, at a church, or at a job site. Will not. Put it in your book. We're not gonna do that. I love Chapel Hill, I love Winona, and I love those kids. I'm sure half of you out here can raise your hand and say you've seen me standing on a sideline with the football team at either one of those school districts, because I love them. And I'm not going to put kids in a position to where they have to fear feared, feel feared, to go to school for any reason whatsoever. And I just want to make that clear. I've also chosen not to do the reimbursement program through ICE, and I'm gonna tell you why. Because I feel like if people take an incentive to go out and do an enforcement action, they do more of it. So my thing is, is our enforcement action that we plan on doing through immigration is not hunting. I have heard the word hunting several times today, and it's very appalling to me. I'm not a hunter. I'm a rancher. My cows walk around a pasture I don't have to hunt to eat. I don't hunt people either. That's not right. I'm not hunting anybody. If we make a traffic stop on someone for breaking the law, for violating a traffic offense, we will go from there. If that person has narcotics in their vehicle, they're going to jail, just like a citizen would. If that person has warrants, they're going to jail, just like a citizen would. What I'm saying is we hold everyone in my precinct accountable, everyone. And I know there's some people that might disagree with me. I know Ms. Reynoso likes to disagree with me, and that's fine, too. But I've got my statistics to show you that in twenty twenty, we made six hundred and ninety-seven traffic stops. A hundred and thirty-nine of those were Hispanic, and four hundred and three of them were white. That means fifty-eight percent of the traffic stops were white, and twenty percent were Hispanic. Twenty twenty-one, we had twenty-one percent Hispanic, fifty-five percent white. Twenty twenty-two, we had twenty-three Hispanic, twenty-three percent Hispanic, fifty-five percent white. In twenty twenty-three, we had twenty-two percent Hispanic, fifty percent white. Twenty twenty-four, we had twenty-six Hispanic, fifty-two percent white, and in twenty twenty-five, we had nineteen percent, as of today, Hispanic and fifty-nine percent white. And out of all the arrests we've made on traffic stops, which is thirty-five, two of those have been Hispanic. Two. So that means in a six-year total, twenty-two percent of my traffic stops were Hispanic. Fifty-five percent were white, half a percent was Native American, one percent Asian, and twenty-two percent African American. Are we racially profiling? I don't think so. I will say that out of all those traffic stops, that number is four thousand two hundred and ninety-nine, six hundred and eight of those received a citation. That means fourteen percent of the traffic stops, we might get a ticket, and one percent of them were arrests. I want you to know that as your constable, nobody should be in fear of the law unless you're breaking the law. Nobody should be in fear of a law enforcement officer. And if you read the 287G program, it specifically states that we're, we're not supposed to do, nor are we supposed to ask for immigration status from victims. Meaning, if you call 911 because you're a victim, we're not supposed to ask you if you're an illegal immigrant, we're not supposed to ask you if you have an immigration status because you're a victim and you're calling for help. My guys assure you won't do that. So I can tell you that I think that whatever's going on today with the other departments that are using the 287G program, I don't work for them. I don't write their department policy. I can't tell them what to do. I can tell you that no federal entity, including the 287G program, is gonna tell me how to run my office. Every peace officer in the state of Texas has discretion to enforce the law how they see fit. The only two things you can arrest for in Texas is an open container and speeding, and the only thing I shall arrest for is a violation of a protective order in my presence. Everything else is to my discretion. Everything. No politician from Washington, none of these people sitting up here are gonna tell me how to run my office. I run my office the way I run it for the safety of the public. I will say that if you don't have a driver's license, you don't have insurance, you are putting yourself at risk driving up and down the road, because if you have a wreck, you're not covered. If you hit somebody else, they're not covered. It is an issue. Are they the hardened criminals of the community? No. But I can tell you right now that if you are an illegal immigrant and you are a real criminal in the precinct, and I've already talked to Mr. Garza about this, we're talking real criminals, drug dealers, sex trafficking, gang bangers, I promise you, wherever you're from, you're gonna get to see your family, because I'm gonna send you back, because it's not right. The citizens of this county should not have to endure the torment and should, should not have to endure having to pay for their way through the criminal justice system when they're not even supposed to be here to begin with. I'm all about everybody coming here to live the American dream. I'm not about people coming here to live their dream and make their dream off of the victimization and the criminal inflict that they use in this county. I'm not. And if you disagree with that, we have a real serious disagreement when it comes to the way that you look at, at the world. The world is a scary place, and I don't want to see this place turn into Chicago, and that's where I'm at with it. And that's where I'm at with it. Thank y'all for your time, and thank you Judge.
Thank you, Constable. Any comments or questions from the court for the constable?
I just want to say thank you. I want to say thanks to everyone that showed up here today. I want to say thank you to all the people that we received emails and phone calls from, because this is the way government's supposed to work. I appreciate everyone being respectful today and having civil discourse. This is a good movement today. I appreciate every voice that came to the table, because you enlightened us to things that we weren't completely aware of. And I think it gives cause for concern, some of the stories that came forward. Public safety is a core function of government, and we have a duty to support the rule of law. And the stories that were revealed need to be investigated. But I don't think in any way that Constable Joplin would violate some of those freedoms that you might have mentioned today. I think that Constable Joplin laid out a great plan and clearly described the way that he's going to enforce the 287G program. No doubt, there's a lot of work at the federal level that needs to be done to streamline the process. It is full of red tape, and it's slow. I've known people that have taken a long time to be able to get their citizenship. And that's something that we all should advocate for, just like you did today. We should be advocating for a better process, so that people can get here and go through the right steps to become citizens. The choice today is to authorize one more office to join the program and assist ICE in removing criminals, illegal criminals that are here. This is drug traffickers, these are drug cartel members, these are sex traffickers of children and women. And that's what we need to do to uphold public safety and to enforce the law. So I support Constable Joplin joining the 287G program, and I do think that there's a lot of work ahead. My door is always open. I'm willing to listen to anybody that wants to have a conversation. And I do want to see some of these stories brought forward. We need to at least look into those and see the validity of them, and see what we can do as a court to assist in that. Thank you, Constable Joplin, for coming today.
Yeah, where do you start? You can't pick and choose which laws you obey. Not how it works. David Stein said earlier, and I talked to him yesterday, and the words that he said are the ones I said to him. I said, "When I took this oath, the oath that I took was to the U.S. Constitution and the Texas Constitution and all the laws that go with them. I can't not support something because I don't like it. If we did that, what a mess we would have." I also know from past experience with Constable Joplin, that he has repeatedly told this court that we're not going to tell him how to do his job. To my knowledge, nobody's ever told him how to do his job. I haven't. I will say, under the Texas Constitution, there are two things that that office has. That's what's mentioned. And when it's come to budget time, what I've heard repeatedly is, "We don't know what we're doing. We're not handling things the way we should handle it. We should be giving him more, more, more." I also repeat what Mr. Stein said earlier. "If you're that darn busy, why aren't you trying to take on something else?" I mean, that's my question. So, we all supported the sheriff's office, every one of us voted for this program. And let me remind you, it is reimbursement. The 287G program has been around a long time. What we are here as a court to decide is whether to accept money, money that we're spending anyway. But as I sat here and I listened over and over that it was about race, and it's about this, and you know, I'm a white guy, I can't tell you I have experienced all that, because I haven't. But what I can tell you is, if officers are doing their jobs correctly, and they're enforcing the law, doesn't matter what color you are, you either broke it or you didn't. So, our role here is to decide on the money. I have reservations about this, for reasons stated. I mean, the other constables haven't come forth and asked for this program. You know, only they can tell you why. But I do believe that we have to get things in order and stop calling each other names. That solves zero. So just to assume somebody is one color or another, and they have a certain set of beliefs, is horse hockey.
...